Transparency, or whatever else you want to call it, I will not speak this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Respect that. All right, the public hearing is closed. Where did Mike go?
To the men's room.
Oh. Well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In light of these discussions, we have a hard time going away without, and then coming back to you because of this, it's normally, you make recommendations and then we move it forward. And as Commissioner Pichon rightly said, let's see how we can tweak this a bit. A couple of items that I think that when we start thinking about the whole issue of buffering, the clarity here, the intent was first and foremost, not as Commissioner Pichon clarified, it certainly wasn't for anything that didn't do, create those type of noises and bad types of industrial responses, not nurseries, not apiaries, none of those type of uses. So the language that we're tweaking certainly will make that even clearer. And I appreciate, this is what this is for. This is for the opportunity for all the brains in the city, residents, the council, to work with staff to fine tune these type of things. So I consider it a privilege to be able to do this with you all and with the community. One of the items, one of the speakers said something that I thought was interesting, that I'm not sure how to address it, but I'm thinking on it. If his house, he has a house now, and a lot of them, they're still there, the single-family homes are still there. And he was thinking of maybe putting some sort of business in the rear, which would be not this side, but I don't know which way his house is facing. It says facing west. So if the single-family home remains, and he's adding a business, when would we want the eight-foot fence installed? Because the whole purpose of the eight-foot fence is to buffer the residential across the street. Because you have this separation of higher intensity potential with the lowest intensity you have in the city. So I'd like for us to think a little bit on that as we're talking through this right now.
Let me take a thought here. So effectively, he's not across the street. He's on...
He's on, the residential is on this side.
It's on the other side of the street.
But his house is facing the residential across the street.
Facing, but in the industrial side.
Right.
So I don't see where the fence would apply, because he's already got the house there. That's, that's a good eight-foot right there. You don't need to add to that. It's already there.
Right. The second question, and I agree, and I think we need to, I think I need to get with the city attorneys a little bit to perhaps get some language in there that talks to that, that as long as that single-family home remains there, and they have the business in the rear not facing the residential, how can we still create the same intent? Could it be that that piece of the property gets fenced? Could it be that, as Mayor Burns suggested, that fence goes in further and the buffering on the outside, you know, the extensive buffering on the outside? These are all some very great ideas that people who are in this community, they have great ideas. And I'd like for us to think a little bit on those tonight as we're tweaking this language.
Well, one of the questions that I have relative to this, if I remember from the earlier read-through, we discussed a 25-foot setback in the rear, didn't we?
In the rear. That only happens if it's a redevelopment.
Well, you see, now this is an interesting issue.
In the property, that's...
Yeah, how do we redefine redevelopment? You see, because, for example, the homeowner wants the full use of his, the rest of his lots. You take 25 feet away from that, and that doesn't leave a lot of room.
That's where develop, and you're, you have a very good point. Just remember, in industrial, in M1, the setback in the rear is only 15 feet. So the rear of these M1 properties, depending upon how they are designed or redesigned by the property owner, if that house remains, then that becomes part of the setback, because that house already probably has a good amount of setback to make that rear, because we're really trying to buffer the industrial activity from the residential across the street.
And the house is already a buffer.
And the house could act as a buffer. So when I would be looking at this, I wouldn't, for the design parameters, and I think this is where, to your question earlier, to someone's question, is that that would already become the 25-foot rear setback, because it would be measured then from the industrial activity, and you'd already have that 25 feet. Because that's what you're buffering, that's the reason you're increasing that buffer that's the normal. And that house probably already has a very close buffer to that point as far as setback.
In my, in my mind, what I'm looking at, if these houses sit in the M1, and the M1 being what it is for industrial purposes, what is the real merit to that 25-foot setback if it's now currently 15? Why the need for the extra 10 feet? Because it's already behind existing structures.
It depends upon how they redevelop. If they wipe out that house...
Well, that's if.
Right. If they wipe out the house, this is where this is, is driving this, is through the redevelopment process when this thing's come online. In the meantime, the buffer in the rear, and he puts the business here, it's not facing here, so it meets that criteria, there's already a setback for that that equates to that amount. So it's not like we're adding, have to add more on top of that. It's just the R2 already had, the previous R2 had that type of setback already. So instead of allowing the industrial to creep closer than it did before, than the residents did before, this is where I think that this idea of the 25-foot setback is from the, is adding to the industrial buffering. Because otherwise, you'd have the buffer, the industrial, 15 feet away from the property line, and...
But that would be at the back of the property.
Depend, that's correct. If, for example, the back of the house address is this way, facing east, then that's the back of the property.
His house is facing west. He's already testified to that.
If it's facing west, that's the front. And as long as that house remains there, and he's going into the rear, then you've got this buffer already there that you don't need to then make him do another 25 feet.
So it's your interpretation of this, that he would not be penalized, he could build to within 15 feet of his back lot and not be penalized?
Right. And what, when you write code, you try to test the code with all kinds of what-ifs, you know? Because you can't write for every single thing, but you can, you can write to the best of your ability by testing the code out in situations. We looked at it from the perspective of what happens if those houses stay there. And they're oriented this way. But if they want to put a business in, that business, that new business, can't be oriented that way. So if you took the house and changed the use of that house to a business, to a industrial activity, then there's the, all issues are different then. Because now you've got an industrial, industrial use that may not meet that 25-foot setback. But again, depends upon how everything is oriented. So again, it's a case-by-case basis.
As long as you've got the house in front that remains residential, then...
You already have the buffer from, you already have the buffer from the residential by buffering the residential that you already have. But what you have to do is, and that, as long as that remains your front, and your front access, then your front access remains the same.
But the suggestion is there needs, there should be some language around that someplace.
And that's where I'm going with this conversation, is that we are seeing that now the what-ifs are coming into play. And again, it's hard to write code that covers every, all situations. So you try to write to the majority of the situation that could occur. But in this case, redevelopment may take a long time to occur. And these houses may stay and just be added on in the back.
Then, if I may try to add something to this then, so we could say that any new modifications to existing properties that are already buffered, those new, the new setbacks established would not apply to that property.
Well, I understand where you're coming from.
Because you're excluding, what we would want to do is exclude, let's say, that said gentleman who put in studio in his backyard, he's already met the standards of that, of that district, of that zone, zoning district, the M1. He's already met that. So therefore, the language could just merely state that should an addition be put forth on that residential property, there would be, it could be excluded from any new...
Let me try a...
Not grandfathered in, but would be an exclusion.
Let me try an analogy here, just so I understand this in my mind. So the house is facing to the west. Here's the house. And he's got his presumably 15 feet, and then he's got the house. And he's got all the rest of this behind him. So if he chooses to build in the back...
As long as he met the 15-foot setback in the rear of industrial...
And that's, that's across the board. So where does this 25-foot apply? Does it apply to the back, or does it apply to the front?
And see, this is where the, the concept of the rear setback is assuming the structures, as they redevelop, they cannot orient to the front. So as redevelopment occurs and a new business comes in, or they change that use, that business can, and it becomes a business and not a resident, it has to be reoriented so that the business cannot face that way now.
Yes, but in the event that he builds his warehouse in the back, it doesn't much matter where the door goes. Because you're not going to see it anyway, because the house is going to be in front of it.
That's, that's true. It's then, it's the conversion of the house, it's the conversion of the house to a commercial use.
But as long as the house remains residential, the back can proceed unencumbered.
So is it, is it as simple as any development on the west side of the property must be buffered? Because it's an east-west thing.
Right. It appears to be...
It's only one, I mean, this is a real small area.
It appears to be the orientation and whether people are, the houses are oriented, facing that way, or whether they're oriented that way.
That's my point. If any redevelopment on the west portion of the property must be buffered by 25 feet.
Whether if it's residential.
That way, if he buffers something, if he builds behind his house and it's on the east side of the property, it's not, it doesn't apply.
Well, they, in M1, unless he is, unless he is, residential is not an allowable use in M1. It's actually non-conforming, legal non-conforming houses now. They can be built back if they are destroyed. But if they build them back, you know, they can go in the same footprint, this, the same density, and then, again, then you have the same issue you had before, is if the building, if the, if it's here on this side and it's not a business, then you don't care, because it's not a business being oriented this way. And they're not, it's not an industrial use. It's the industrial use that occurs on the, as you said, Commissioner, it's when it appears on this side, on the west side of the property.
Effectively, as long as his house remains in its residential use, he's got the full use of his backyard within, to within 15 feet of the property on the east side.
That's correct.
So he's not encumbered by this. So then all, all we're remaining with now is whatever may be deemed appropriate language to save the nursery, so they don't have to be enclosed.
Well, we did, we took care of that, because we clarified that the, these type of industrial uses have to be enclosed. Things that are, and the...
Heavy industrial.
City Attorney is talking about those type of things, such as the agriculture. Agricultural or outdoor storage is allowed as a special exception. So the uses that are there now are grandfathered from any special exception. So if a new nursery came in on a different piece of property, it would have to go through a special exception, or even outdoor storage has to go through a special exception. But that's, it's there, it was already grandfathered in, and the intent was never that nurseries or farmers' markets or things like that would need to be enclosed. It's only those type of things that really make, have bad results from industrial activity that need to be enclosed.
We can comfortably assure Howard that he doesn't have to put up an eight-foot wall, and he doesn't have to enclose the nursery, and it's not in danger.
No. Because as long as, as long as no one changes their use or, and goes to something different than what they have, then these things don't even affect them.
All right. In which case, what is the recommended language that we are proposing that the city council adopt in lieu of what they've already put forward?
Gary, did you want to talk about the industrial, the agriculture? Did you proffer that language yet?
I feel comfortable having that language included to clarify. You're talking about the special exception.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then, did we talk, did you think a little bit on the buffering requirements?
That setback is a problem.
I did write an exception.
I drove through there the other day, and some of those lots, I don't know, did you do an aerial view of this?
I actually, I actually walked the street.
I'm sorry?
I actually walked the street.
You walked the two, but I mean, do we have an aerial that we could look at?
Yes, yes.
Because it's really kind of narrow, like, if, like you look at, I look at the nursery over there. If you took 25 feet back on one end, then what is it, 15 feet on the other end, on the east end? That's a heck of a lot. That's 40 feet that he can't grow anything on. And I think right now, if I'm not mistaken, there's no sidewalk in front of the nursery. So, and by the way, I want you to know, you did a nice job in landscaping that in front. I was really impressed with that, by the way. I thought that was first class.
Yeah, really good.
You really, you really did. And what is that, like about five feet back from the sidewalk?
Maybe, I mean, if it was...
I mean, from the street.
If there was a sidewalk, it would be about five feet back from it, yeah.
And how many feet back from the roadway are you?
We should have all comments on the record. If he's going to talk, he should come to the program.
Could you step up your, I'm sorry.
Good, good point, Mr. Helt.
Thank you, sir.
You know, we're trying to accommodate the business owners and the residents, and we want to do this right, not have to come back and rehash this.
Howard Tonkin, 12600, Griffin Boulevard. So we have a narrow swell at the front that we allow parking for customers.
This is on the 12th Avenue side.
This is on the 13th Avenue side.
13th, okay, that, okay. I'm talking about the side that faces the residence, the west side.
Okay. I believe that the actual property line is to the street, I believe.
Is it to the, no, not to the street?
No. To the fence. The property line is to the fence.
Okay. And how many feet from the, you're about five feet, I would think, from the side, no, more than that, maybe about 10 feet.
If there was a side, if there was a sidewalk, we would be about five feet from the sidewalk. I mean, it's the, there's a, there's a full wide swell, so we made sure that when we did, when we start, we have not completed the landscaping, it's just on my little budget of my small business.
You did a nice job.
You know, we're just a small business, so we're doing the landscape, you know, a little bit at a time. But we made sure that there's enough of a space for people to safely walk on the, on the swell. It's an area that floods, so it's, I don't think it's really inappropriate to put sidewalks through there, because it would just be more hardscape that will exacerbate the flooding issues without the water mitigation. And then we set the landscaping back so that we would be definitely enough people, room for, you know, residents to graciously be able to walk past. But then if there was then a sidewalk put in per se, and then that additional setback, it would take out a huge chunk of the nursery that, we're already very, very limited on space.
Yeah, I, yeah, you can't, you just, you can't move that fence to the east, because it just takes too much of your property. You don't have anything there.
I mean, we're...
Where that fence is now is ideal.
A typical nursery to produce the plant material that we work with would be of a two-acre nursery, so we're about a third of one acre. So we're very, very, very tight on space to produce the amount of plant material and services that we provide. So any impediment upon that would be very crippling to the business, yes.
Exactly. All right.
Thank you, Howard. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You know, we're trying to get this right. Yes, Mr. Helt?
So I've discussed with Ms. Love some language which she suggests we should, I should read into the record for you to consider.
All right.
So on the buffering, this is sub-paragraph D2, it would read, "In addition to required landscape buffering, for insert changes of use to uses other than industrial, then insert, except where the residential use and structure remain, an expansion is to northeast 13th Avenue. An eight-foot solid metal fence shall be installed, etc., remains the same." And for the setback, minimum rear yard setback shall be 25 feet, and again, the same language, except where the residential use and structure remain, and expansion is to northeast 13th Avenue. Then the setback on northeast 13th Avenue shall be 15 feet.
Wait, wait. I thought it was 12th Avenue.
No, no, what he's saying, sir, is that if the expansion is toward 13th, then these things don't apply.
Exactly.
It's when it goes to the west toward 12th...
Right.
...is where you need all of these.
So why, but let's look at his nursery there. You take 25 feet away from that, it's, it's not a profitable business then, it's done.
Just remember that whatever's there now, unless they go in and change the use, demolish it, and do something that becomes industrial...
Okay, that's industrial, but I'm talking about...
These type of industrial uses.
Do we do a cutout for the, for his nursery?
You don't need a cutout for that, that existing nursery. And when you look at, any of the existing uses aren't going to be affected until such time as they change the use. Let me just lead with that, and I'll let the city attorney and your commission board attorney weigh in.
Yeah. And then on the enclosure, she wanted me to, Ms. Love wanted me to state again that language for your consideration about the enclosure requirement being waived for outdoor uses, which would read, " exceptions to the enclosure requirement for agricultural, nursery, or other outdoor uses may be allowed through special exception approval."
That's not it. We then have created, "All industrial uses must be enclosed, except for these few that we're going to make exceptions for." And that doesn't say that anyplace. The enclosure was designed for specific heavy industrial uses.
Okay.
It's, he's trying to deal with the assurance on the, on nurseries. And again, it was only intended to cover just certain types of industrial activities.
Then let's just say that, as opposed to making the nursery the exception. These are the exception.
That is true.
And they should be listed as such.
And that's the...
And therefore enclosed.
And that's why I feel more comfortable with the original language, because I don't believe you need to have that special carve-out for anything other than that, because it, they're not required to be inside.
I asked several people to read this, and I read it, because I, I read it exactly as I said seven hours ago, when we got here. And it was that this defines the industrial uses in the area as it is written. It doesn't allow for all the other allowed M1 uses.
And we, we've now tweaked that, that I believe that covers that.
So we modify it to allow all the industrial M1 uses, and these specific uses that we believe give off nuisances should be enclosed. And that's not that difficult.
Pretty clear language. I think the, I think there's a lot of concern from those who are concerned that other types of uses, other activities other than this would have to be enclosed. And so we're assuring now through this tweak that that would not be the case. To the question of Mr. Eche's concern about, would we now make the nursery, put 25 feet in? No. As long as nothing changes on those properties, none of this applies to them. And then the further tweak would be the expansion issue. So if you're, if that residential stays there and you're expanding this way, this doesn't apply to you. It's when you redevelop and/or you now have industrial on this side, or those type of industrial activities on those...
As you're going west.
As you're going to the west. As you go closer to those houses, if you put industrial, then you need to buffer.
It's really a mix over there, because...
It is.
The best way is rezoned, people should, you know, get a good price for their property and put a nice buffer, a realistic buffer. That would be in an ideal world. Unfortunately, it's not that way over there.
Right.
You've got the railroad tracks, you had the battery sales, and as you go further, yeah, it's, then you got this...
All right, so if I understand this, then we've preserved the nursery.
Or any...
The young man is freed to develop his back lot, and we're enclosing the heavy industrial uses, which was what we intended to do all along.
All along.
And the nursery's not affected in any form, fashion, or manner?
No.
Okay, so we have, I think we've effectively addressed the fears of the residents up there, and we've taken care of what's existing.
All right, let's run another hypothetical by you. What you're saying is 15 feet on the east side, 25 feet on the west side, the setback, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's if you redevelop, yes.
To redevelop. So you're looking at, you're taking 40 feet off of the property, right off the bat. How big is, how big is that lot?
125.
Well, you have 30, in the norm, it would be 30 feet.
Going east to west, east to west, what's your feet?
Your front, it'd be 15, your rear would be 15. So what we're, what this would tell you to do is now you need, instead of 15 and 15, it's 25 and 15.
Right now, you saw, it's going to be 25 feet on the west side, because it's residential, and 15 feet on the industrial side, because that's on the east side. So what I'm saying is, you're taking 40, total of 40 feet from the right away.
It's 10 more than, than what they would have before.
But that's, again, only if there's redevelopment.
Only if there's redevelopment.
It's only if it's redeveloped.
Correct.
But now, what is the total length of that property?
He said 125 feet.
Hundred, how much?
Hundred, I think somebody said 125 feet.
125 feet?
So he went from east to west.
So it's 10 more feet buffering if he, if those properties redeveloped to large issue.
So out of 125 feet, you have 85 feet of space that you can actually, that width that you can actually develop and build on.
Mm-hmm.
Does that include your parking?
No, your setbacks are your setbacks. Just like he would normally have 30 feet, now he would have 40 feet. Because you're trying to, the whole, the whole point of this, the whole point of this is to create the buffering that protects that, that narrow lane of, between the industrial use and that low, low-intensity residential. If you don't want to proffer that, that's fine. This, we're trying, we, we as planners, we look at what is good planning practice.
I could see, I could see on, like on 12th Avenue, like the nursery there. All right. If people wanted to pull up to the front and park in the front, and it would be properly landscaped, why would that come off of the, why should that, in other words, you have to be 25 feet in, then you're allowed to park, right?
Build a structure.
To build the structure. Your parking, yes. Parking, parking, you have a five feet away from any property line, or 25 feet from the edge of the pavement before parking can start.
25, to build a structure, okay, not the parking.
Right. Not to the parking.
Thank you.
The parking can go, right.
All right. Thank you.
But for redevelopment, when redevelopment purposes occur, the city doesn't allow parking in the front. It requires parking in the side or the rear of the property. But for the purposes, as you just said, the setback, parking isn't included in that.
Yeah.
So it's not...
And I think I mentioned this before, and William Jennings Bryan said, when the law and common sense collide, let's always hope that common sense prevails. And I'd hope in our development that if another business came in there, common sense would apply that...
Well, and what we do is, we look at the maximum extent practical when we are, especially when redevelopment occurs. Because you have oddball things that happen. And so you try to get people to come into, especially through redevelopment, to come into compliance to the greatest extent practicable. Say, for example, a shopping center redeveloped and, or just a portion of it, somebody wanted to upgrade their shopping center, just as an example. And yet they don't have enough parking spaces, because the parking code was old. Normally, you would have to say, oh, sorry, you have to bring everything up, all your parking up into compliance. Can you work with that, that person? Can you work with that? And the same in any type of situation. There's, planning staff tries to be very, we try to be very... There's, planning staff tries to be very, we try to be, to try to work with developers and property owners to the greatest extent we can within the code, and then, once it reaches a certain threshold, then it requires variances and special exceptions and special types of approval that goes beyond us. But we do try to work with folks, understanding the limitations through redevelopment that can occur.
All right, at this point, then, is the commission comfortable with adopting the ordinance and the recommendations that Mr. Held has put forth?
Would you, just for me, please, would you done this? Would you read?
I've tried to accommodate your position by changing some of the language to make sure that it reads like you think it was intended to read. The ambiguity in my mind was that it says industrial uses should be limited to X, and these outdoor uses are also in the industrial use category. So for me, there was some ambiguity there. But I'm, I think we've clarified it. So I'll start reading.
Clarification.
Okay.
Everybody, please listen.
Right.
So D1, use, industrial uses shall be limited to fabrication, manufacturing, assembly, or processing of materials that are in refined form, and shall be located in enclosed structures designed to prevent the escape of smoke, gas, odor, dust, noise, vibration of earth, soot, or lighting, and shall not include dry cleaning plants. Now, if any clarification is required, I have a sentence on outdoor uses, okay? Agricultural, nursery, or other, or other outdoor uses allowed through special exception approval shall not be required to be enclosed.
Okay, I like that.
I would like to make a friendly amendment to my colleague. I think I liked how Jennifer fine-tuned that a little bit better.
The first part?
The first part.
Okay.
And Jennifer, would you read yours again, please?
Use, industrial uses that include fabrication, manufacturing, assembly, or processing of materials that are in refined form shall be located in enclosed structures designed to prevent the escape of smoke, gas, odor, dust, noise, vibration of earth, soot, or lighting, and shall not include dry cleaning plants.
That, to me, is super clear.
That's pretty much it.
And that, that addresses exactly what, what Commissioner Pechon had recommended early.
So we'll adopt Jennifer in the first part, and Mr. Held for the second part, to preserve the nursery.
Then that, then that actually does not, that doesn't mean you don't need any exceptions for the, anything else.
I'm okay with that.
Because nothing else is, has to be enclosed. Am I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So strike, striking the outdoor exception.
Right, because it's only these things that have to be enclosed.
The nursery is not any of those things. So we're okay with that. Howard, you're okay.
So anything other than these type of activities do not have to be in an enclosed structure.
So you could, you could have a demolition thing, well, no, you can't, because it would have to be enclosed. Say a junkyard.
No, it's not going to go there.
I would move acceptance.
All right, at this point, then, the chair will call for a motion to adopt the ordinance and the recommended, recommended language changes proffered by Jennifer.
So moved.
All right, and.
Second.
And staff, there was something else, in addition? No, the staff adopted Jennifer's language.
We're going to talk about buffering and setback?
Yeah.
All right, so we, we're looking at the buffering and setback.
You want to do a vote on that use first? And vote on them separately?
All together.
Okay.
All together.
So let's, all right, let's, let's deal with the buffering and setback issue, then.
Okay, so buffering is D2, and it would read, unless there are changes, buffering, in addition to required landscape buffering, for changes of use to uses other than industrial, comma, except where the residential use and structure remain, and expansion is to northeast, is to northeast, is toward northeast thirteenth avenue, an eight-foot solid metal fence or CBS masonry wall shall be installed along northeast twelfth place. If the use is industrial, an eight-foot CBS masonry wall shall be installed, installed along northeast twelfth place.
You know, Kevin brought up a point about, say, the, the wall was left into disrepair, that would come under code enforcement.
Yeah.
They would be citing them for that.
Yeah, we don't need to do.
Yeah, that's, that's a wish, I think.
I like the language, personally.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
You know, Bob, I have to say, it hasn't happened often, but I truly agree with you on this point. I commend you for waging the war. I think you've done very well. All right.
So there's one more section on D4, which is setback, minimum rear yard setback shall be twenty-five feet, and insert again, except where the residential use and structure remain, and expansion is toward northeast thirteenth avenue, the setback on northeast thirteenth avenue shall be fifteen feet.
Okay, that preserves the issue the young man brought up, and so I think we're, we can move on that. So at this point, do you feel we're now ready to call for a motion to adopt the ordinances presented and the recommendations that have been put forth by the city attorney and by Mr. Held, the attorney to the planning commission?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You all got it, that's good. Now.
And I would really like to thank the community for their great feedback in this process. This is where, at the planning commission level, people just don't realize how important this particular level of the review process is, because you really get into the first round of feedback and conversation, and here's an idea, here's a thought, what about this situation? So I really want to thank the community, who's turned out, and who's been very helpful with this process.
We thank you all for coming, and we hope you've enjoyed your experience so far. Now, let's get on to the last item, before the sun rises in the east.
All right.
I'll show it to her.
Hey, you're not here in the middle of the night with me like you were before, remember? So.
Let's hope not.
Let's hope not.
This is PC 7-18, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, providing for text amendments to chapter twenty-nine of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by amending Article 5, Division 14, entitled Parking and Loading, specifically at section 5-1402, entitled Schedule of Required Parking, to adjust the parking ratio requirement from point five to one parking space for elderly housing, providing for repeal, conflict separability, correction of scripters' errors, codification, and for an effective date. Staff report, please.
Yes, this, this particular item is pretty straightforward. It's increasing the parking ratio. We, staff undertook, Vice Mayor Keys had asked staff to take a look at, particularly this particular one, in addition to all the other parking, but focus right for right now on this elderly housing parking issue. And so staff, and she wanted some empirical data brought forward, and so we completed a study and an inventory, looked at a lot of data, and nationwide, while nationwide, that point five is the norm nationwide, here in Florida, we discovered that, that one is about the, is here in Florida. So we're a little bit more auto-centric than they, you know, the rest of the country is. So we certainly could suggest that that be increased to one per dwelling unit.
Okay.
So the idea was, the whole idea behind this change, or even looking at it, was the parking, preserving the neighborhoods, working with the, hearing the concerns brought forward by the residents regarding parking, and at some point in time, we hope as staff to have an opportunity or be provided direction to actually take a look at all of the parking ratios, and whether they are workable or not, but also to look at parking as it's, as it meets the market demands as well, and how do we maintain housing affordability? Because each time you add a, a, a new parking space, it adds twelve thousand dollars on the average to the cost of the, of the house. So, you know, this data that we are, we put forward into your package, and I think that was the big concern, is how do you balance all of that? You know, meet the market demand, make sure that you're protecting the neighborhoods, and keeping housing affordable. So staff is recommending increasing that from a half to one per dwelling unit.
All right. If there's no further report of staff, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this specific ordinance is invited to step forward. We ask that you all line up, so we move the testimony along as efficiently as possible. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Eliana, eight-four-nine, northeast one-twenty-first Street, and I wanted to submit some of the recommendations that are made by Miami21.org, and also just some observations from other cities. I'm going to pass them to you guys to look at them, their language that we'd like to have included. Within these are, first, that the applicant submit a demonstration of what would happen if the fifty-five and over building is no longer used for the elderly, and how they would accommodate for market rate housing in the future with the parking requirements. The other is to make sure that if they do change the waiver from the maximum federal, which is point five to, to one, that they also consider parking for visitors and staff. The other is that they provide certification from the state and federal agency in charge of the program of the application. Again, this is to make sure that when somebody is coming forth with a development proposal for the elderly, that they actually have permission to do it, because it's such strict regulations. So if they don't get the approval, and then we're stuck with a building that doesn't have adequate parking, that is a problem. And the last one was that if this elderly housing is part of a mixed-use development, that we make a special effort to make sure that the, the parking requirements for each use is considered separately. So if you have stores, that they have their parking requirements, and then very separately, we consider the elderly requirements, so that they don't double count them, and that we add language to the code that looks at all the possibilities to protect us from that overflow of parking that can go into the residential houses. So we've, again, took a lot of time to look at other cities, and we also looked at the recommendations made by Miami21.org, and we hope that tonight you go through these. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Eduardo Santos Lima, I live on ten thirty, northeast one-twenty-second street. I would like to support this documentation that has been distributed to you. I have been in other meetings of the council members, and we are very concerned, the neighbors, concerning the number of parking that will be submitted for those mixed use. And we are thanking you for considering, we thank you so much for taking this modification from zero point five to one, right? But this is a quiet residential area, then we need to understand that all those needs for cars and those assisted living and mixed use will be much more necessary parking area, otherwise we'll be, all the neighbors will be, the traffic and all the cars will be parking in our, in our homes, the parks, the streets are already, I live in a very quiet street, and the cars go like crazy, right? If we don't have area for those, those mixed use to be really using parking area that is appropriate, we'll become a crazy, we don't, we bought those houses here because we would like to live in a quiet place, right? So please, we thank you so much for moving from zero five to one, gratitude, right? But we would be very thankful for you considering to go to one point twenty-five. Thank you so much, sir.
All right, thank you. State your name and address, sir.
Robert Hewset, eleven fifty, northeast one-twenty-third street, and I, I believe that the one-point-oh parking ratio is not sufficient, the language is not sufficient regarding this ordinance, and those issues have been brought to our planning and development board. In addition, I would like to put a little language that maybe one parking per sleeping unit, because if there's a two or a three-bedroom apartment, there's going to be two cars. If there's a one-bedroom apartment, there may be one, there may be two cars. If there's a studio, there's going to be one car. In addition, there is the ALF and, and the mixed use, they need to have their own parking requirements. We were guaranteed by the city, in a meeting at city council, that they would do their best, and you're here to do that, to see that there is no spillover effect like there was at fifty-six-hundred northeast fifth avenue, Miami, Florida, with the Pinnacle Development Housing, which I would recommend that our development person go pay a visit, where they could see the spillover effect of the traffic and the drop-off. Fifty-six-hundred northeast fifth avenue, and it's eyes on the boulevard, it's a building with two eyes looking over Biscayne Boulevard, but there's a lot of ugly illegal parking along the railroad track, and a lot of congestion in and around the building, and it just attracts from, well, it doesn't have the neighborhood in front of it like this proposed building does, but it will give an idea of what doesn't work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, next.
Hello, Marisol Medina, twelve-seventy, northeast one-twenty-fourth street. I'm grateful that we're adding parking, that, hopefully, that we can maybe pass this not only to the elderly, elderly housing, but to all of the buildings and things that are built in the city, that they not require such a small amount of parking, because we are sadly a very car-driven city. I do like the idea of the, the one-point-twenty-five ratio. It does accommodate for a more realistic perspective when it comes to parking. Those are actually my points. My, my neighbors have hit it really good, and you guys are doing a good job. I'm definitely going to come to these meetings more than the council meetings, we've got more done. I like it, thank you very much.
Well, of course, we only make recommendations, but we do listen. Yes, ma'am, you're up next.
Hi, my name is Alina Medina, twelve-seventy, northeast one-twenty-first street, and I just want to say that I also support the increase in the parking ratio to one-twenty-five, and I hope you do consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ira Seema Perez, and I live in eighteen, northeast one-twenty-third street. I really would like to consider the parking for this project, and things not change, so the language really be looking really careful for one thing that they say and something else at the end, because we as residents, we do get a lot of car racing, and it's, we have children in our streets, so like they say, you know, if there is three people living in one three-bedroom apartment, there will be three cars in there. So it's more realistic, some of you don't live in this area, we do. So it's very important you consider what we say. Developers, they come and they go, but we remain living in there, at the end of the day, you all go to your houses, but we remain in here. So please consider what we are saying to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak to the ordinance? Calling once, calling twice, no further speakers, public hearing is closed. All right, we're open for commission discussion.
With, with regards to parking.
Okay, I think Mr. Ernst had his hand up, let's get to him first, Mr. Ernst.
Question of staff, first of all, let's establish what the ordinance is directed citywide, is that correct? Not just talking about any particular project at this time? This is merely addressing elderly housing? Is that what you're asking us to look at?
That is correct. That is for this particular, in our schedule of parking, we have parking for all sorts of types of uses.
Right.
So this particular use is citywide. This would apply citywide to any type of development, that this was a use component. So if they have, if they have a retail component, they have elderly housing, then they have non-elderly housing, that's, then they are, each of those are applied their own parking ratio.
Correct. Again, this is for existing elderly or any new development?
This would apply to new development.
To new development. Anywhere in the city.
Or redevelopment.
Or redevelopment.
Right.
Currently, well, existing development right now, let's say elderly. Currently, well, existing development right now, let's say elderly facilities. I'm not familiar with exactly how many we have in the city. Would that be changed for them?
No, sir.
No? Okay, so if they have something higher or lower that they, that they were developed with, then that stays?
That's correct. It's the same as the conversation we had earlier about the use is not having, things not affecting uses until they go in and change that use. Or they make a substantial improvement. That's the other thing that I know Jason was waiting for me to say. Or the substantial improvement, which is over forty-nine point nine percent of the cost of construction is a substantial improvement.
Right.
Then it kicks in for that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Now moving to the right, Mike.
Well, I know several people that live in fifty-five and older. And everybody seems to want to have a car. So I, I think that giving, given what, moving forward with the city, I, I think that the moving from zero point five to one is acceptable. I think it's a good thing. I think it, I think it addresses the reality of, of elderly housing. Because all the elderly housing, as I've said, that I've seen, a lot of cars. You know, so I think as, as people get older, I mean, all of us know people in their sixties and seventies that have cars, right?
I hope so.
Yeah, exactly.
Look to your left and look to your right.
So, you know. So trying, so trying, so saying zero point five, I think is a little unrealistic.
Well, I'll interject right at this point and tell you all that I can easily live with one point two five. I have no problem with that. As I, as I look at how redevelopment is taking place under Miami21 and Brickhead Developments, government bins over backwards to give away parking, and we need to reverse that trend. I do not see a problem going to one point two five.
What kind of a? Would, would that prohibit development? Would that, would that, how much does that add to the cost of the unit? And could that person afford that unit? One of the reasons was for elderly housing was because of disposable income?
Well, remember that the data that has been produced, and there's a thorough, if you have not had a chance to read, this is a pretty thorough analysis of the cost of how, what parking adds to the cost. Again, it's a twelve thousand dollars per parking space and that's added to the cost. It's not on, I'm sorry. It's about twelve thousand dollars per parking space. So that does impact the afforded, ultimately impact the, you know, that's passed along. The developer isn't going to just pay that, you know, for no reason. So one point two five, one point five oh, whatever it is that you all recommend. Staff is recommending at least one. We're recommending one. Because the data shows that nationwide it's a half, Florida-wide it's one. And, but we wanted you to have all the data to help you make the best decisions as you sit on the stairs.
Yeah, and as you mentioned, there is a cost.
There is, there is a big cost and that cost is going to be, Kevin, that, that cost would be passed on to the resident. And one of the things that caught my eye in there was how much this, well, the idea behind senior citizen housing, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't it because of income and what I read in here and disposable income? And how much disposable income would that person have to spend on rent? And the more you build into the cost of that parking space, the more he's, or she is going to have to pay. And when you told me it was fifty-five, geez, I must be like Grandma Moses here.
Jenny, I'm not that, quite that far behind you.
Mr. Chairman, that's one reason why, I know with my discussions with staff earlier this week, the cost factor did come up and, you know, you crunch the numbers and realize that the developer is going to pass that along to that resident. It's going to either, if they're going to buy a, you know, have to pay that extra cost. And that, that, that also means the person that, that doesn't necessarily have a car, he's also going to have to incur that cost.
Right.
It's every resident in that, in that building. So I, I took that under consideration when I looked at and found to me the one point zero being satisfactory to what I think would be manageable for, for someone.
You know, one of the.
In my age bracket.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that I was, was into, the citizens speaking about, you put up a development and you have the overflow parking in the neighborhood. And one of the ways to prohibit that would be restricted parking. In other words, decal parking. People that live in that area, the residents only, they have a decal. People that park there that don't belong, we have it down in Key West or what have you. You park in a residential neighborhood, your car gets hooked and you're gone. And that, that's one way to do it. I know down on one hundred and thirty-fifth street, it used to kind of burn me up when I would see tow trucks down there and taxi cabs down there because they couldn't park up an Aventura. So you, you can do that. You can do that kind of restrictive parking. I, I guess you would work with Metro Data, what have you, and, and get those signs up and get your citizens together. And you say, like the area of Tenth Avenue, the Twelfth Avenue, residential parking only, decals. And that, and that's, that's one way you approach it.
And I think a bump from zero point five to one is sufficient. It, it mirrors what the standards are in our county anyway.
We don't have mass transit.
And we don't have mass transit up at this end, so, you know.
And, and when, when we did this study, we took that into consideration, the communities we looked in and the areas that did not have transit. So because they, when you had transit, there's some of them were zero. But, you know, right? So when you analyze and you do these type of studies, you have to make sure that you're comparing apples to apples. So, but, but this staff is recommending one. You certainly can recommend whatever it is that you all think is, is reasonable. And I know that when I, we, I spoke to a couple of the council commissioners earlier, that there may be some conversation further.
Talk closer to the mic.
I'm sorry. It's kind of hard because I feel like I'm like.
There you go.
Hang on a second. I got to lean way over here like this.
It's the North Miami audio system. You do have to.
I'll just lay down like this.
Hit the microphone and you do talk, unfortunately.
My apologies, everyone. I think that there might be some other conversations that some of you had, had spoken to me about some other potential amendments you might be wanting to proffer. And I know, Jason, you, you wanted to speak and I, I apologize, I, I just jumped over top of you, so my apologies, sir.
If I may, I do want to talk about two of the items from the resident that brought up. This is from Miami21. City of Miami, I guess, has adopted this, I want to say back in two thousand nine, from my recall. But the, the first one, I don't know how our code speaks to the first item. I don't know. Do you have a copy, Debbie?
I do.
Okay. Well, how it speaks to applicants. How applicants must submit plans to demonstrate how the parking will be, remaining parking will be accommodating if the housing becomes a market rate housing. So the way I'm reading that is what happens if, you know, we approve this, a certain amount of parking under this type of use, and then later on they decide to change the use. My understanding is that once you change the use, when they come to apply for a permit to change that use, we now reclassify them and say, if you want to propose this, this is now your new ratio. Is that how it works? Meaning if, if the new ratio is higher or more strict, then they, they cannot proceed with changing the use until they meet the correct ratio for the intended use. Is that not how it works?
Only if there is, and I'm going to defer to the, to city attorney to catch me on this one and, and Mr. Hill. But only if there's a restrictive covenant that says that, that this shall be fifty-five, limited to fifty-five and over for thirty years. And then they try to come in and change that use, then they have gone against that restrictive covenant and they would have to then upgrade their parking. Madam City Attorney.
I, I agree with Debbie's analysis and what you're, in elderly housing and most of these type of projects, the city would require restrictive covenant. And the only way out of that is to come back to the city and to renegotiate. And then at that point, looking, you know, depending on what they were looking at implementing, at that point, it would, it would be that the city would be getting involved and, and having input and of course whatever.
It would most likely come to us and then the city council. Yeah, it would come to us and then it would come to the city council.
Okay, so they, they can't, they can't come to all the board, you know, the hearings, get all this stuff in place, market it as a adult living facility or whatever, I'm sorry, as elderly living facility. They can't do that and then do like a switch, a flip flop and then come back and say.
Not without the permission of the city.
Not without the permission of the city because it's usually comes with a restrictive covenant that runs with the land or owner.
Runs with the land.
Itself, okay. All right, and then the next, the next one that I thought was interesting was item number four. From what I, what I understand from this is we just, when we have these mixed use developments, I know that mixed use tend to be a little bit less strict when it comes to proposed parking. That's what my experience has been. So I guess my question is, are we, are we looking at the breakdown? Or does our land, the way we, we evaluate the projects and make sure they're, they're good for parking, are we looking in the use by use or is it just a general mixed use parking ratio that we're using for all the projects?
That's an excellent question. And no, we look at each use individually. They have to provide parking for that use. So if you have a retail space, it's one for every three hundred. If you have a restaurant, it's, it's one for every hundred and fifty. If it's an office, so each one of those are calculated separately. The applicant in our code has an opportunity, and this is fairly common, to do a shared parking analysis to determine if the uses, what the peak hours for demand are for those uses. So an office building doesn't have a peak demand in the evening. However, the residential units have a peak demand in the evening. So the, the way that the methodology is done, it determines the peak hour and the peak number that you need. So if, if the code says, look, you need to have four hundred parking spaces. And the peak demand says you can, your peak demand is three hundred. You got to have at least three hundred to cover your peak demand hours, obviously. It says up to twenty-five percent you could get a reduction for. But if that doesn't meet, if, if their peak demands is, comes to fifteen percent, that's all you're going to get. Reduction. You've got to meet that peak demand number at a minimum. There are other adjustments in the code. For example, for every bike, five bike racks, you can reduce it by one parking space. There's another that says that if ten percent of your parking is hybrid vehicles, you could get a ten percent discount. But all, all of those things, the max you could get of all of that is twenty-five percent reduction.
Okay, and that has to be backed up with a parking study to prove that you, you're okay with your proposed uses being less than what the code requires.
Right, because of the peak demand. And then you, your engineer provides that. Our engineer double checks it and says that whether or not they agree with that. And we've actually had projects come in where our guy said, no, that's not correct. And so we've actually said, no, you don't qualify for twenty-five percent. You qualify for twelve percent reduction or you don't qualify for anything. And that we've, that's the, the good part about having our own consultant go behind and verify that that is applicable. But those are the options for reductions. But it starts with individual uses and their individual parking requirements.
Thank you.
All right, Bob?
I got a whole book on parking, by the way. And we talked about this quite a bit the other day. So there are two things I want to, I want to break this down into two paths to try to be clear. What's before us tonight is the elderly parking thing.
Right.
I want, I'd like to take that first, but I really do want to dovetail back on this other thing. Because shared parking, the problem, the problem we encountered and the city encounters now with allowing all these juggernaut giant boxes to go into residential neighborhoods is that all the overflow parks in front of somebody's house. And we give all these discounts to people for hybrid vehicles. Guess what? All of those hybrid vehicles need a parking place. Because you've got a hybrid vehicle, we reduce the parking spaces. I, I don't, I'm not sure that's the right solution. And bike racks, bike racks should be, should be provided. And that's just the way it should work if we want to have a bike economy. And we don't allow, I mean, the people aren't choosing to ride their bikes to work and sell their car. But we're now, we're now squeezing down the parking and that's the problem we ran into. But let me go back to where we started. First, I was appalled to discover elderly was fifty-five years old.
Jason might be the only one that hasn't hit that threshold.
But, so in, in doing a little bit of the research though, so we do not, we, in the last LDRs, we put in elderly parking, we didn't define elderly housing. So what is elderly parking? So everybody seemed to be convenient shopping a definition. HUD defines elderly park, elderly families. An elderly family is all, it can be you alone, you can have a companion, a relative. All residents must be sixty-two years old.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two. The only exceptions to that are those residents that require special assistance. And the assistant can stay there to provide the help. The HOPA exception, which, which allows for eighty percent to have, eighty percent of the residents must have one resident of fifty-five years old. So I've got a fifty-five year old guy, his thirty year old wife and his sixteen year old kid. And we're going to give them a half a parking space.
But they can't be under nineteen.
His nineteen year old kid. And we're going to give him a half a parking space. It's not working. The HOPA exception was not designed around anything other than to, well, I don't want to say anything other, but it was principally developed to prevent, to allow age discrimination without being sued. So if we lived in an elderly community, if I lived in the villages and we were, that was determined to be that form of housing, we could keep anybody under the age of nineteen out and not get sued for age discrimination. And that's what that was designed for. So, so here we are as a city in North Miami, trying to establish parking requirements for a thing we don't have a definition of. So that's the first problem. So what we discussed the other day was if we're going to reduce it to fifty-five, maybe everybody in the, everybody in the house needs to be fifty-five years old. That's consistent with HUD's definition for elderly and we're reducing it from sixty-two to fifty-five. Because if we're going to subtract parking, if we're going to subtract parking because they're elderly, don't need cars, I don't want a fifty-five year old guy, his thirty year old wife and his twenty year old kid. They're not going to have half a car or one car. To Mike's point, they're going to have a couple of cars. And if, if there's inadequate parking, they're parking in somebody's lawn. So I think in the definition, we need to allow for, if, if we're going to take it to one or one point two five parking spaces, provided that all residents in the building are fifty-five years old. That's a suggested modification to how we, because we don't have a definition now. And if we're going to provide for elderly parking, we need to have something that's consistent across every application. So I think that's a miss and we need to provide something.
Can I ask a question? So is it possible if a developer came in and wanted to build partial elderly housing in a building, that a certain number of units could be evaluated based upon this standard for elderly housing and the remaining could be regular housing?
Right, if they, if they.
But that would go to whether it's fifty-five and over in the unit or the building?
Right.
So it's really per, by unit?
Well, if you do that for the units, that's, that's fine, I guess. But then, but then the multiplier times the number of parking spaces is, we, we do it now, not times bedrooms or anything. We do it times units. So if you're dedicating fifty units to people only of the age of fifty-five and older, maybe that can be done. I mean, I guess, I don't know why you couldn't do it. But it, it keeps the entire building from being, I mean, basically a, just, just parking exceptions. All we're providing is parking exceptions.
Right, but half, let's say there's a hundred units, fifty are for elderly housing. Fifty are elderly housing and fifty are for regular housing.
Fifty are elderly housing and fifty are for regular housing.
That means that the other unit, the fifty for regular housing would be evaluated based upon multifamily,
which is what, at what rate? One and a half.
Right.
Plus five percent for guests.
And so, I mean, you wouldn't want to create a standard that would only allow fifty-five and older if you wanted a mixed building. I mean, that's a desire, I think some people would say that's a desirable thing.
Don't tell me it's elderly housing then.
No, I understand.
Because a lot, and the, the one project that we had a look at, the largest number of units in the building was three bedrooms.
Right, only those units that satisfy the criteria you're defining, which you have the right to do, would qualify for the special rate you're talking about.
Right, so if you're saying that, that provided that all residents, and they see, this is per dwelling unit. So you're saying provided that all residents are fifty-five years of age and older.
Minimum of fifty-five, whatever, yeah.
Right, uh, that's why I use fifty-five and older. Um, the idea here would be if fifty percent of those dwelling units were dedicated and deed restricted for fifty-five and older, they would get this level of parking. Because this is a type of use parking. And then anything that doesn't meet that fifty-five and older deed restricted would be counted as multifamily.
And have to have the one point five.
And would have to have one point five plus five percent parking for guests.
Well, that brings up, well, let's come back to that.
Here's where, here's where I think we're gonna start getting into the muddy water here because of the fact that I think if anybody's gonna have a multi-residential unit, it's gotta automatically allow for more parking regardless if they have elderly in there or not. Because then you can't, you can't differentiate between who lives in what, what, uh, unit just because they're fifty-five or they're thirty-five. So anybody that, that would, that would absolutely discount them. Unless the, the building is built specifically for fifty-five and older, then this, this would be accountable for. But I don't think we can throw in a mixed use thing without having it be a blanket one point five or whatever it is in parking spaces.
Regardless if they're elderly or not. I agree with, I agree with Charlie. I think we need to make it pretty cut and dry that, that, you know, um, this is for- elder projects of fifty-five and older only.
And that would be all residents?
All residents, right.
Exactly. So if you made it for-
And I think you can make the HUD exception to special needs.
Special needs, yeah.
Right. That being, that being a caretaker would be allowed.
An assistant to, because-
A caretaker.
Yeah, caretaker.
So the research that I-
Yeah, but technically, that's not a buyer, that's not a buyer of that unit.
Can we phrase it?
I mean, he's, he, that, he's, he's a transient. He's not a permanent resident of that. He would not be on record as, as a resident of that building.
Well, I, just to be clear, what, what I read in the HUD thing is some people, I mean, the sixty-two and older, there are people that require assistance.
Sure.
And it's not an ALF, so there's just, I've got somebody that's staying with me to take care of my needs. Um, and that person was exempted from the requirement.
Well, how about if we, Bob? How about if we just make the motion, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Well, we'll consider it, uh, whether we get a second or not.
Because I think there's still some questions.
Well, I, I think the, how about that we have a motion to the effect that the, in consideration of, you know, the-
Yours is the HOPA exemption.
Oh, I see, the parking needs of the city plus, you know, as Kenny and, and Debbie brought up about the cost per unit, that the ordinance be, um, you know, one parking unit, uh, one parking space for, um, per unit for elderly only housing being, meaning fifty-five and over with the exclusion of those who have a caretaker, something of that sort. Am I crafting that right, Mr. Held?
I'm trying to think of how to mirror that.
I'm looking at another issue, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, Mike, while we're talking about that.
We're still back one.
I, I, I'm gonna throw a monkey wrench into our whole thought process here because our core problem is we keep talking about parking per unit and not per bedroom. And that's where we, we have sold ourselves down the river in government when it comes to caving into developers, you see. Developers talk about units, but we live in bedrooms and, and we park our cars accordingly.
Well, if, if I can-
We've done all this ass backwards.
Well, i- if I can, some time ago, the League of Cities had a conference on that. And to do per bedroom is just an impossible chore. And just is really cost prohibitive for developers. You know, so that's why that didn't gain any legs. And that's why nationally, it's, you know, it's one per unit without the designation of how many bedrooms. That seems to be the national standard. Because trying to do, huh, I'm sorry.
I think we're at national, we're trying to go state.
Yeah, but anyway, I'm saying, you know, statewide. So, Mr. Held, is that?
He's still trying to find the exemption for-
So what I had seen was under Housing for Older Persons Act, federal act, that not only was the sixty-two standard used, but fifty-five and older, but the standard was eighty percent of the units had to be occupied by fifty-five and older.
Okay.
But that was for the HOPA exception.
Yeah.
And that exception was the, the, the age discrimination buffer.
Otherwise, you can't, you can't discriminate on familial status because of the age, which includes age. So with the HOPA Act, it allows that exemption to that requirement that says, okay, you can discriminate if they are fifty-five and older and eighty percent of the units are occupied by people that are fifty-five. There, I don't know, I didn't recall seeing an exemption for caretakers in that particular, that's me, uh, caretakers in that particular act. And did you all wish to do that and mirror the language in the HUD sixty-two, um, age, uh, exception?
Bob wanted fifty-five, right, correct?
Well, I'm saying if we lower it to fifty-five, HUD defines elderly families as sixty-two and up.
Why don't we keep it at sixty-two? Why don't we keep it at sixty-two?
Well, I think you're, I mean, I'm, look, I'm okay with that. I was trying to find some common ground that if we do it for-
I wish I was sixty-two again.
Sixty-two is aspirational for some people. But, um, if we reduced it to fifty-five, which then, again, I cringe at fifty-five being considered senior housing, but, um, it, but then you maintain, you gotta be fifty-five. So if you-
All units have to be occupied by those fifty-five and older.
All units have to be, well, I, so why can't all units be advertised as sixty-two?
That's HUD's definition.
That's HUD's definition.
But that's where the-
They define elderly, they define elderly families, they define disabled families, they, I mean, they've got a series of definitions for that. The only definition they have for elderly families is what I just said.
It's sixty-two. The HOPA Act allows you to go to fifty-five, which is why the study captured the whole idea of the fifty-five. The villages are fifty-five. A lot of these, um, housing units like that, the senior housing seem to pick at fifty-five, rather than the sixty-two, because the sixty-two, for HUD purposes, is for funding sources. So when if somebody tries to go to get HUD funding, the units are sixty-five unless-
Sixty-two.
They, I mean, sixty-two, unless they click into the HOPA exemption where eighty percent is over fifty-five and that kind of thing.
Yeah, because they did that because the- Sixty-two is the legal age that you can retire, uh, for social security. That was the reason why I think they set that at sixty-two for early, early social security beneficiaries.
So I'm stalling a fog here. If, why, why are you saying you can make it eighty percent for fifty-five or eighty percent for sixty, sixty-two?
For, no, that you, you can discriminate, they say elderly or senior housing, for HUD purposes, for purposes of funding, uh, is sixty-two years of age.
Okay.
Right?
But we can lower it to fifty-five.
But you can, they have the HOPA Act that says that if you guarantee that eighty percent of your units are occupied by those who are fifty-five and older, then you can discriminate and keep people, younger people out of the development.
Okay, okay.
Right?
So accept your caretaker, your caretaker.
Well, there, there's no exemption in the HOPA for any of that because I think it's probably covered under the HUD Act is why they don't pull in the HOPA. Cause they're saying that, um, each, and it's really hard to manage those things because there's some really strict guidelines. And if you don't do everything and you don't do your reporting properly and you don't make sure that you're managing those units, you lose that exemption. And so then you have to accept kids.
So this, this is the way to go then? I mean, if we're gonna do this, this is the way to go.
It's much easier than trying to say, well, let's say eighty percent.
All right, I got you.
Where I started with this is if we don't make some definition around what we call elderly housing, we're crazy to have elderly parking.
Well, what I'm saying is, that's why I said we get one, one parking space per unit.
Per unit.
Okay, um, and we can set the, the age at fifty-five, um, and then give an exemption of some sort for caretakers.
We're gonna do that later, right?
And the definition's out there, their next minute, yes.
So let me, there was the other part of this that I wanted to get into is, this is not a, this is not an assisted living facility. This is a, this is a, people that go to work.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and people have visitors. When we defined elderly parking, we didn't make any provision for guest parking.
That was going to be one of staff's suggestions to consider is, um, look at maybe saying, uh, one space plus five percent as you do for multifamily for guests or some number.
Well, but see, if you do that, you're right back at the one point two five number anyway. And on top of that, a lot of the-
And that's a possibility, that's an absolute possibility.
Elderly housing projects wind up being eligible for all kinds of government subsidies in whole or in part, which would eliminate the, the cost burden of that point two five space.